Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you take your seats, I'd like you to stand with me, please, and observe a moment of silence for Officer Lansdorff, who was tragically killed in the line of duty this week. I've always said that without our police department, we don't have a civil society. So, these guys are always in harm's way. Let's take a moment of silence and pray for Officer Lansdorff's family and honor him. We call the roll.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Trankis?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Presiding Officer, you have a quorum.
Very well. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of June 18th, 2019?
Still move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. June 18th, 2019, Journal is approved. At this point, we have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, second district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, sixth district.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Moving on to Roden Bridge, Madison's Presiding Officer. Item number one, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh districts.
Receive, file. Go ahead, Tim. Go ahead. Receive, file, plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of the cost be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, sixth district.
Receive and file, and the street be accepted for maintenance as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, seventh district.
Receive, file, plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of costs be approved by the Director of Procurement, be authorized to advertise for bids pending authorization from the Federal Highway Administration as requested, and a copy of the report to be sent to the interested parties. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
I believe, before we move on to other communications, Mr. Presiding Officer, I believe what we were waiting for has arrived.
Very well. That being the case, then, at this time, I move to suspend the rules for the presentation of a proclamation by the County Executive Sam Page to Joe Strasser upon his retirement after 50 years of dedicated public service solely within the St. Louis County Department of Parks.
Say it again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries, the rules are suspended. Mr. Executive.
Let's get our picture. The councilmembers would like to join me. Fifty years of service to the county is something.
He must have started when he was.
He was about to bid. Oh, we did. You're welcome to make your call. I'm happy to do it.
Well, this was supposed to be a summer job.
Yeah, right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Oh, okay. All right. Don't worry. All right. I'm believing you.
Moving on to other communications, sir. Item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number three, second district.
Same motion, and that will be the order.
A second on that one?
That is, that is a change of order.
Let me see. Hold on a second. That's correct. I'm sorry. Receive, file, and change of order be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, third district.
Receive, file, and the change of order be approved as requested. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, first, second, third, fourth, and sixth districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number six, fourth district.
Hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number seven, seventh district.
Receive, file, and refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works, Department of Planning, Board of Election Commissioners, and County Consular.
So ordered.
Just a moment, Mr. President.
Take your time. Yeah, so, I'm gonna, do I need to suspend the rules for this?
No, there are any suspended on this purpose.
That being the case, then, I'm gonna ask the county clerk to read the proclamation that was just conferred on Mr. Strasser for the record.
I think this conforms substantially to what might be in the proclamation. This was information sent to me by the Parks Department. Whereas Joe Strasser began his 50-year career with St. Louis County Parks on June 16th, 1969, and whereas Mr. Strasser has served the department as a friend, coworker, supervisor, and mentor through the years, and whereas he retired June 14th, 2019, after a half a century of dedicated public service, and whereas he earned the admiration of his supervisors with his hard work and leadership ability, and whereas Joe served as a role model for his fellow employees, and whereas Joe and his crews maintained many of the crown jewels of the St. Louis County Park System, beginning in his career at Creve Court Park, and moving from there to supervise Spanish Lake Park, Laramore Park, Spanish Lake Park again, Creve Court Park again, Queenie Park, Tillis Park, Queenie Park again, Greens Felder Park, and returning finally to Creve Court Park in 2005 to finish out a remarkable career. Now therefore, the County Executive and most of all our park patrons express our gratitude and salute Joe Strasser for his fine career. Okay, moving back to other communications, sir. Item number eight.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 10.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 11.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 12.
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number 13.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 14, first district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 15, second district.
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number 16.
Receive, file, and the appointment be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please read the add-ons.
Yes, sir. Under other communications, item number one.
One moment, please. I just don't seem to have my add-ons here. Thank you, thank you. Receive, file, and the appointments be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number three, all districts.
Receive, file, and the corrected report of the apportionment of the 2018 Railroad and Utility State Assessed School Taxes collected in May 2019, and that will be the order. Report to the County Executive.
Thank you, Ernie. I have several matters to report on this week, and I'll start with the update on what we're doing to bring accountability to the operations of the Justice Center. Last week, I outlined many reforms that we have made at the Justice Center since taking office. Those include changing several policies and procedures, and we have taken additional action since then. Since last week's report, we received a request that the county conduct an investigation into the deaths. I am committed to identifying the best practices across the United States for investigating in custody deaths, but I do want you and the public to know what we've already done to get to the bottom of what happened. First, each death in the Justice Center is investigated independently by the Clayton Police Department. Second, the medical investigator, the medical examiner also investigates the cause of death and produces an autopsy report. Third, Justice Services Internal Affairs Unit investigates whether policies and procedures were followed and recommends any appropriate disciplinary actions. And fourth, the Department of Health conducts a morbidity and mortality review, which is this type of administrative review that's recommended by the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. And finally, the Department of Public Health conducts a personnel review of any nurse that's involved in a death. So there are currently five separate investigations conducted into deaths at the Justice Center, but this might not be enough, so I've invited a leader of the MacArthur Foundation to meet with me soon to discuss nationwide best practices for in custody death investigations, and if we need to do more investigations, we will. We have also received several requests for documents associated with those investigations, and I have a few announcements in that regard. First, to improve transparency, I have directed the Department of Justice Services to post all of its policies online. The current jail policy manual is about 10 inches thick and weighs over 10 pounds, so it may take some time to get it all uploaded, but we believe making that available to the public is important. Some of its contents is sensitive security information, which will need to be redacted, but I've asked those redactions be as minimal as possible, so we'll begin putting policies online this week. We're taking the same step with the Department of Public Health's corrections medicine policies, and we'll begin uploading those this week as well. I've also initiated a top-to-bottom review of what documents exist concerning the deaths and what we can make public in response to the Sunshine Law request. My staff met with departmental leadership on Friday, and we are preparing recommendations concerning these documents. I hope to make more announcements on this soon. Another way to improve transparency and to ensure accountability is to have oversight by qualified and diverse Justice Services Advisory Board. I've nominated new members to the Advisory Board, and I want to thank this council tonight for confirming them so that they can begin this important work soon. Regarding older county residents, I do have some great news to share. On Friday, I participated in the opening of Covenant Place Two, Con Family Building, and Mirwitz Center for Older Adults in St. Louis County. This facility is located on the JCCA campus in Creve Court. It has been thoughtfully designed and constructed so that older adults can age well and independently at an affordable cost. Our administration is committed to ensuring that the county is an age-friendly place. We are focused on all these efforts on helping county seniors to actively participate in their community and stay connected to those around them. St. Louis County Government assisted in this project by supporting it with $3.3 million in housing and urban development funds. I'd also like to note that the County Department of Human Services is operating a breakfast and lunch program for area youth this summer. We anticipate that they will serve 30,000 meals in 18 different shelters to kids in St. Louis County, and this program is part of my administration's mission to build a better future in our community. I want to thank our Department of Human Services Director Andrea Jackson Jennings, who I see in the back of the room, and I want to thank all of her staff for her hard work on this program. And finally, I have a few announcements to make. First, tonight, I am announcing the appointment of a new county Consular, Beth Orwick. Beth currently works for the United States Department of Justice as an Assistant United States Attorney. She is smart, ethical, and devoted to public service. I hope Beth's appointment will help us to continue to restore public trust in our county government and to demonstrate how serious we are about moving out of the mess left by the prior administration. I look forward to introducing Beth to you soon, and I hope you will confirm her appointment as well. One of the first questions I will ask Beth to review is all of our legal opinions on the Sunshine Law to ensure we are being open and transparent, following state and county laws in our county charter. I anticipate authorizing the release of a significant amount of information, but I need the opinion of our new county Consular to do so. Also this week, I plan to announce new members to the Board of the St. Louis Economic Development Partnership. We have discussed the appointees with the Acting Director Rodney Crim, and he is excited about forging new relationships that will restore faith in this important agency and help us refocus our mission to grow and retain businesses as well as attract new ones in St. Louis County. Thank you, Ernie.
Thank you, Mr. Executive. Report to special committees. As many of you know, the Ethics Committee convened today for a hearing. The witnesses that requested to appear failed to appear, and the committee unanimously adopted a recommendation that it will send to the full council and be on next week's agenda. As much as I think it's appropriate to get into it tonight, but nonetheless, we'll take up that recommendation at the next full council meeting. With that, public forum.
We have seven speakers this evening, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. Folks, please come forward when your name is called. I remind you that council rules try to limit the length of each presentation to three minutes. Obviously, we'll give you as much grace as we can. We have other matters on the agenda. That said, there's nothing more important than hearing from the citizens as elected officials. I don't know of anything more important than that, so I would commend all of you who are going to speak tonight for engaging your elected representatives and making sure we understand what your positions are with respect to whatever concerns you have. I thank you again for coming. With that, proceed.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I would recommend that you make a motion on the report that's under a report of special committees. They'll hold that.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're right. So with that, I'll ask that the report of the special Ethics Committee be held on the order of business, and that will be the order. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Moving on to this public forum, first speaker this evening is Robert A. Katton, Sr.
Good evening, County Executive and Council. I'm here in response to, I've talked to several people in St. Louis County Government in the Jenny Station Road Extension Project. There's been several accidents. The walls and railings have been damaged. The city of Jennings say it's St. Louis County's responsibility because it's on the right-of-way. I did talk to Carl and also Scott, I guess it's Duttso. I talked to those two individuals, and they were going to get back with me. That was the first of May. I haven't heard anything. It's very dangerous because kids are walking down that sidewalk and can fall off that wall, which is about 15 feet. The other issue that we have, that right-of-way, it's not being cut. That right-of-way belongs to St. Louis County. The city of Jennings is saying they can't cut it because it's not their right-of-way, and as a resident of Jennings living nearby, I don't think we should live by four-foot-tall weeds and grass. If you guys are gonna put medians in the roadway, they need to be maintained by St. Louis County. It shouldn't take a phone call to get that work done. I talked to Scott and Carl. We're both in the area. They are aware of the problem, but they didn't get no timetable on when it was gonna be fixed. The project on Lucasson Hunt at Hoard and Hughes Camp is taking too long. Also at Kennamore, they have redone the ADA sidewalks, and they raised them above grade. So people that are in wheelchairs that goes to all these, they can't get across that sidewalk because it's above grade. City of Jennings says, well, we gotta wait on St. Louis County. What does that for someone in a wheelchair that has to get across? Now they're in the driving lane with the potential of getting hit. So I'm asking St. Louis County to please come to Jennings and see our problems and take care of them in a timely manner, because I don't think this would go on in the city of Clayton, Ladue, or any other St. Louis County area. We're in the north side, but we want to be taken care of just like everybody else. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paul Fox. I'm the Director of Judicial Administration, which is, of course, the Charter of, I think it's the County Charter. My department's made up of not only family court, but the Circuit Clerk's Office, the Sheriff's Office, and the Court and Bank, which is jury and other staff. We support the state court. The reason I'm here today is because I'm a little concerned with some of the language I've seen on the new bill, because while we're happy that you included family court, we're a little concerned that you've not included the rest of judicial administration, particularly the Sheriff's Office. The sheriff is responsible for ordering the courtroom. The bailiff's, we're already four or five bailiff short, plus the state just passed a bill to give us a new treatment court administrator, and we'll have to staff that. And so if we don't get some help with that, we may not be able to complete our function to staff and safely maintain the court. The Sheriff's Office certainly is a public safety organization, and so I would hope that you would consider putting the Sheriff's Office and all the judicial administration in the bill. Not that I'm asking for any particular money, but I just don't want to be excluded in the future. Won't be my problem because I'm retiring at the end of this year, but I think for the future, for the good of St. Louis County and judicial administration, that that needs to be included in the bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Good afternoon. Executive Page and councilmembers, I would like to take a moment to thank Councilwoman Gray for her courage and all she has done to try to help and start the conversation about the racism, even when it is constantly being ignored here in St. Louis County. I am deeply concerned by the communication I've received from Executive Page regarding my workers' compensation matter. Executive Page, I need to know who sent you this document. This is a fraudulent document. Page one and page two of the communication I just gave you from Ms. Ishmael, who is the council for the department. She sent page three and set out McDonnell Douglas insurance carrier on the day of my injury. It was industrial indemnity, not Cambridge, as this order speaks to. Fraudulent documents are commonly passed around with the state sealed to give them the appearance they are legitimate documents. I have never brought my workers' compensation claim before this council. Page four, Boeing versus Isora Leggins, is the matter I came before this council seeking help for. Executive Page, what is in it for you to mislead the council and the citizens in this room regarding my problems? Clearly, you cannot help me if you do not know what my concerns are. Please provide me with the names of the person who filed with you the workers' compensation documents. My concerns are a lack of due process, equal protection, and unfair treatment in St. Louis County. These are the things that have been set out over and over and over again when I come before this council. What protections are available for me and other residents by way of the county government? This is why I have come before the council, not my workers' compensation matter. If you will review past meetings, these are my concerns. Please provide me with the names of the person who supplied this information to you. Chairman Trankis, my email to you asks if you too will be a chairman that the people must rely on what you do and not what you say, as Executive Page has expressed. For a person who suffers daily, the ability to express myself by telling the truth is very therapeutic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leggins.
Thank you, Ms. Leggins. I'll look at your supplemental information.
Next speaker is Kenneth McQuendon.
Good evening, County Councilmen.
Evening.
Page and Council. Two concerns this evening. One is Mael and Halls Ferry, right there at the White Castle. We have a, there's been several accidents there, and we're, I'm here to request that that street, Mael, coming off of Halls Ferry be made one-way going east.
What's the name of that street?
Mael and Halls Ferry, right there at the White Castle.
M-E-H-L.
M-E, I'm sorry.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I'm requesting that street be made one-way going east off of Halls Ferry, because if you come off of Mael to Halls Ferry, there's a lot of accidents there. There's a light one block over, and if we utilize that light and change that light and set the light so it could be more beneficial to the vehicles in that area.
We can have our traffic engineers take a look at it.
I appreciate it. The other thing is boards and commission. I seen tonight that you have made several appointments to boards and commission. I see you made the one for the Justice Department, which is a very important one right now because of what's going on right now. I noticed that you made some, you're gonna make an economic development appointments on boards and commission. My concern is, North County needs some regular people on the boards, on these boards and commission, people that's involved in what's going on. I'm not talking about the local politician and all this, that, and the other. I'm talking about people that is concerned about what's going on in North County. We would like some of the, have some of that money that comes from, that comes to the county, some of that property developed, like Jamestown Mall and different things and other areas and unincorporated areas that needs to be developed, and some issues need to be developed. I'm requesting that, County Councilman, that when you, Mr. Page, when you get ready to make your appointments, make sure that the North County people are involved in that, and it be equity across the board. I appreciate that. If not, you see me again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Next speaker is Jane Van Cano. Oh, you're not speaking. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the County Council. My name is Arne C.A.C. Dino. I'm a public advocate. The first thing I'd like to talk about is to the County Executive, to the county as a whole, and to the Acting Director of Corrections. Last week, I eloquently and really fairly was really clear and concise on my request for information of the Justice Center. I made a public request under Chapter 610. The Sunshine Law, as the County Executive alluded to, is really The sunshine law, as the county executive alluded to, is really out of whack and not transparent with the 1 million county residents. I even handed a card to the Acting Director of Corrections with my email address and mailing address. At that meeting last week, and you can see it on tape and in your meeting minutes, I asked for the Internal Affairs complaint form, which I've been asking Ms. Childers for over one year. I've asked for the Internal Affairs manager and who that officer, what the name is. I asked for the Internal Affairs policy of the Corrections Department. And finally, after all this time testifying for over one year at this county council meeting, I would think that common sense would be that someone from the Corrections Department would care enough to reach out and ask me about my concerns and interview me. Never happened. I don't know if you're afraid of a lawsuit, I don't know if you're afraid of the FBI coming and investigating, but I think they really need to. So, by me giving the Acting Director, I think that there's a sunshine violation, and I asked that somebody look into it. Number two, a few weeks ago, there was a storm in this building, and I was in the storm shelter in the basement when you canceled your county council meeting. There was a meeting that was barely, and they struggled for a quorum in the basement, and it's the Boundary Commission. Steve Stanger refused to appoint members, uh, as their term of office expired, and I'm asking county executive that they're struggling to even keep a quorum. So, I'm asking that you appoint somebody to that commission. Now, at that meeting, I heard them talk about an elaborate and expensive rent for a high-rise, uh, for one staff member. The county could not find office space for this staff member when they were asked by their current tenant to leave the building because the new owner purchased the building and the new owner wanted them out. Now, this Boundary Commission is bound by a high rent. They went with the higher, long-term, five-year lease, expending taxpayer money instead of saving money and being located in this building, which would be easily accessible by the public. Um, and the director opted for the more expensive space rather than the least. Now, for the last couple of days, I spent the last two days on the ninth floor of the U.S. District Court in Judge Cohen's courtroom, in which a South County family was illegally raided on an administrative, uh, uh, administrative warrant. There's a lack of supervision of county property owners and the wrong use of the Conservation District to get entry into people's homes. There were civil rights violations that I heard of, which five to seven county police officers are being sued, including the county as a whole. The violation of, of the Fourth Amendment of this family, illegal search and seizure, lying to municipal judge and administrative search warrant, killing of a family dog with four bullets with a five-year-old grandson located there, and they stuck a, uh, M2223 to the child's head and then handcuffed the five-year-old. I heard this testimony-
Mr. Danoff, I need you to conclude your remarks.
In District Court, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And this is all over their gas being turned off for a temporary period of time of less than two weeks. Why would a North County, uh, property officer go to South County on a tip from a gas officer when officers are, um, you know, it piqued this curiosity in the foreclosure, taking advantage of people down on their lock? There's a shell LLC owned by police officers with connections to, uh, problem properties, building inspectors, SWAT, and officers. I asked that the police command brass and the county executive look into this, look into this, because it's corruption, it's illegal, and it's unethical.
Mr. Danoff, I need you to conclude your remarks.
Thank you. But the shell company owned by police officers, looking at deficient property, properties, gaining administrative orders, searching their properties, sticking-
Sir, I, I need you to conclude your remarks, if you don't mind.
I'm asking you for an investigation with your ethics to look in these police officers who are taking advantage of the poor and people down on their lock.
That's very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, speakers this evening is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I have a few things to mention this evening. I continue to say the supplemental appropriation request by county executive Page for his office, down to $539,000 from $607,000, has not been justified. It isn't known how many people are working in the county executive's office. It isn't known what all of them do. It isn't known from what departments they are even being paid. It isn't known what vacant positions will be filled, and there are many of them. It is known that Steve Stinger had too many people on the county payroll, including his own office. It is known that hiring Hazel Irby for a job in the county executive's office that previously didn't exist will add $121,000 a year. Council has got into trouble in the past for approving matters when it doesn't know all that is involved. This could be another instance. Just yesterday, county executive Page sent a list of people for the justices, Justice Services Advisory Board. He provided no background on who the people are or why he picked them. Then, all of a sudden tonight, you approve them before anybody has a chance to say anything about them at all. So, here we have Mr. Page talking about open government, being transparent, and one day he sends to the county council a list with no information, and then the next day, before anybody can say anything, they get approved by the council. We might, we might as well go back to the days of Steve Stinger. January of 2015, after Steve Stinger became county executive, he just sent names over to the council, know-nothing, and they approved him. So, we're going back to that time. Also, the county executive will have the opportunity to appoint a new member of the MSD Board of Trustees, as the county trustee resigned this month. The U.S. Attorney's Office is looking into a $150 million contract that was improperly awarded at MSD. There may be even more openings. MSD has long been controlled by the concrete mafia. Hopefully, the county executive can appoint some independent board members. Governments all over the country are now being hit by cyber crooks who demand ransomware. Hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars to unlock computers after they lock them up. Those that don't comply can spend as much as $10 million to straighten their systems. This makes me wonder just how secure St. Louis County government is. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Tom, as always, for your comments. Thank you.
Thanks.
No more speakers, sir.
Introduction of bills.
Bill 160, Bill number 165, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the replacement of culprit number C-4-224 and establishing of a public road designated as West Lockwood Avenue, lying partly within the city of Glendale, Missouri, and partly within the city of Perkwood, Missouri, directing the acquisition of real property therefore and authorizing the county executive to execute contracts, agreements, and related documents. AR-1713. Bill number 166, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the opening, widening, and establishing of a section of public road designated as St. Charles Rock Road West, lying within the city of Bridgeton and Earth City, St. Louis County, Missouri, directing the acquisition of real property therefore and authorizing the county executive to execute contracts, agreements, and related documents. AR-1477. Bill number 167, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract, and after two annuls, with McCarthy Holdings Incorporated and Rockville Corries Company, for a license for St. Louis County to use property as a carriage ride staging area during the Winter Wonderland event. Bill number 168, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and ordinance amending chapter 101, Title I, St. Louis County Revised令, since 1970, Morris amended general administrative provisions by repealing and reenacting section 101.070 pertaining to leases for use of the Shaw Park Drive Garage and Transit Center. Bill number 169, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $50,000 from the unappropriate balance of the general fund for support of continued deployment of the Gateway 301 mobile app. Bill number 170, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $113,000 from the unappropriate balance of the general fund for support of a disaster recovery and backup solution for county data and systems. Bill number 171, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $150,000 from the unappropriate balance of the general fund for support of creation and deployment of a new county website. Bill number 172, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $165,000 from the unappropriate balance of the general fund for support of the Regis Help Desk and building of computers for county departments by Regis staff. Bill number 173, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $175,000 from the unappropriate balance of the general fund for support of the ServiceNow Process Automation System for the Department of Information Technology. Bill number 174, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance appropriating and setting apart $440,000 from the unappropriate balance of the general fund for payment of costs related to the August 6, 2019 special election to fill vacancies in the first and second St. Louis County Council districts. Bill number 175, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance authorizing the execution of a contact with Lincoln Kitzner PC for legal services. Mr. Presiding Officer, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Perfection of bills.
Bill number 17, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
Please hold on the order of business. Bill number 17 is held.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold. Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 102, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. Please hold.
Bill 102 is held.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 145, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect substitute Bill number one for Bill number 145. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries Bill number one. Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 45 is perfected.
Bill number 151, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 151. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 151 is perfected.
Bill number 154, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 154. Second. Is, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries Bill number 154 is perfected.
Bill number 155, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 155. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries Bill 155 is perfected.
Bill number 156, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 156. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries Bill 156 is perfected.
Bill number 157, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 157. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries Bill 157 is perfected.
Bill number 158, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 158. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries Bill 158 is perfected.
Bill number 159, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 159. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries Bill 159 is perfected.
Bill number 160, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 160. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries Bill number 160 is perfected.
Bill number 161, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect Bill number 161.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries Bill number 161 is perfected.
Bill number 162, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 162. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries Bill number 162 is perfected.
Bill number 163, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 163. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries Bill number 163 is perfected.
Bill number 164, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 164. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion ca, opposed? Motion carries number 164 is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
At this point, I'll move to hold Bill number, substitute Bill one for Bill number 76. I may come back to it in a moment.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 83, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Harder, and Fitch. Mr. Presiding-
I'll move to, uh, for final passage of Bill number, uh, sorry, you have a subbill? Is that right?
Yes, I have a substitute bill.
Okay. Um, please read the substitute bill.
Substitute Bill number two for Bill number 83, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Harder, and Fitch and ordinance amending chapter 302, Title III, St. Louis County Revised 令, since 1974's amended budget, by repealing and reenacting section 304.400 relating to the funds distributed to St. Louis County pursuant to Proposition P, a county-wide half-cent sales tax related to police and public safety adapted by the voters of St. Louis County on April 4, 2017.
I move for adoption of substitute Bill number two for Bill number 83. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries substitute Bill number 83 is adopted. I move to suspend the rules to take up substitute Bill number two for Bill number 83 for final passage. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, um, rules are suspended. We've already read the substitute bill for Bill number 83, is there any need to read it again?
No, just, just the title. Uh, for final passage, substitute Bill number two for Bill number 83, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Harder, and Fitch.
Before we, we move on this one, I, I do want to, uh, um, note with great appreciation the help and assistance and cooperation of the St. Louis County Police Department, primarily Chief Belmar, as well as the, um, Police Officers Union and Officer Matt Prasilius. They, um, were very, very cooperative and collaborative in trying to find, um, a common ground here, and we were able to do that with the help of Councilmember Clancy and Walton Gray. So, I'm grateful that we were able to finally put, uh, definition around Prop P that we can, uh, all seem to live with. So, I, I just wanted to acknowledge their help in getting this done. And with that, I'll move for final passage of substitute Bill number two for Bill number 83. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on substitute Bill number two for Bill number 83, there are five ayes.
Substitute Bill for Bill number 83 is finally passed. With that, um, I'd like to return for a moment back to, uh, substitute Bill number one for Bill number 76. Do I need a motion for that?
I think you already moved at the beginning of the meeting for a motion to suspend the rules, so I think they remain suspended.
With that being the case now, I move for final pass, since substitute Bill number one for Bill number 76 is tied to Bill number, substitute Bill number two for, um, number 83. Um, at this point, it's appropriate, I think, to move for final passage of substitute Bill number one for Bill number 76. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Uh, this is to give the raises-
Yes.
To the county council's office. So, what about the other department?
The others will be subsequent bills if necessary, but that just makes them eligible for Prop P funds. This one actually, um, appropriates the money. We haven't got the other ones prepared yet. But they will obviously be, um, included with subsequent legislation.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on substitute Bill number one for Bill number 76, there are five ayes.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 76 is finally passed.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 136, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold, uh, substitute Bill one for Bill number 136. Substitute, uh, Bill number one for Bill number 136 will be held.
Bill number 148, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 148. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Bill number 148, there are five ayes.
Bill number 148 is finally passed.
Bill number 149, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill number 149. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill number 149, there are five ayes.
Bill 149 is finally passed.
Bill number 150, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 150. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill number 150, there are five ayes.
Bill number 150 is finally passed.
Bill number 152, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 152. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, bill number 152, there are five ayes.
Bill number 152 is finally passed.
Bill number 153, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 153. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, bill number 153, there are five ayes.
Bill number 153 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions. Mr. Presiding Officer, we have two this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for adoption of resolution number one. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, resolution number one, there are five ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted. Please read resolution number one.
Somehow I'm used to having this, sorry. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Tracus. Resolution, whereas Homer Norwood was born in Jefferson Davis County, New Hebron, Mississippi, on February 14, 1878, and whereas Homer married Nanny Powell, daughter of Handy and Clara Powell, they became farmers, and sixteen children, Ally, Alitha, Willie, Annie Bell, John, Lovey, Lula, Luella, Estella, Fred, Dorothy, Handy, Jean, Ruby, Lee, Sarah, and Ellie, were born to that union, which lasted 48 years until Homer's death in 1949. And whereas Homer Norwood was a businessman at his best during those years of unjust discrimination and limited opportunities, owned over 100 acres of land, and was a man of integrity and diligence who instilled those values in his children, who passed them down through the generations. And whereas nine generations later, descendants of Homer and Nanny Norwood can be found in at least 23 states and the District of Columbia, with the majority of the family residing in Mississippi, Illinois, Michigan, St. Louis, California, Alabama, Georgia, Texas, Florida, and New Orleans. And whereas, because of Homer's continuing influence, the Norwood family members include doctors, lawyers, educators, pastors, ministers, artisans, engineers, law enforcement, military, laborers, engineers, architects, Secret Service agents, registered nurses, a theater actress, contractors, business leaders, a social worker, and much more. And whereas, when a family with a rich history of both struggle and achievement that so vividly and poignantly mirrors the history of our country chooses to come together in our community, it is appropriate for the council to pause and take notice. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows Section 1, the county council welcomes and congratulates the Norwood family on the occasion at their family reunion, be held in St. Louis County from June 28 through June 30, 2019, and encourages them to take advantage of all that the St. Louis community has to offer.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and congratulations to the Norwood family.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Fitch.
Please read the resolution.
Resolution, whereas Pride Month is celebrated every year in the month of June to commemorate the Stonewall riots of June 1969, and for powerful responses to discrimination and violence based by the LGBTQ community, as well as to recognize the ongoing efforts of those in the LGBTQ community to advocate for their rights. And whereas 2019 marks the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall riots, and the LGBTQ community continues to face discrimination, hatred, and violence, which have caused much inhumane suffering and harm. And whereas, among the many aims of Pride Month are promotion of self-affirmation, dignity, equal rights, and celebration of LGBT community. And whereas, PROMO is Missouri's statewide organization advocating for LGBTQ equality through legislative action, electoral politics, grassroots organizing, and community education. And whereas, PROMO's vision is a Missouri where everyone has a full equality in the hearts and minds of citizens, and in all areas of the law, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. And whereas, PROMO, their staff, and the many volunteers and donors who support the organization's goals and effort should be congratulated for their difficult and laborious work advocating for the rights of all Missourians. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows Section 1, the county council expresses both their support for PROMO's advocacy on behalf of the LGBT community in Missouri, and best wishes for a successful Pride Month.
I make a motion to approve resolution number two.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Abstain.
Mr. Chairman, resolution number two, there are four ayes and one abstaining.
Motion carries, resolution number two is adopted. Finish business?
Moving on to finished business. Item number one, Third District.
Please hold on the order of business. So ordered.
Item number two, Third District.
What I'm going to do is make a withdraw. I'm going to drop this, because this was addressed earlier in the legislation that we voted unanimously for earlier, so I will drop from the order of business.
Very well, that'll be the order.
Item number three, Third District.
I'm going to make the same motion to drop from the order of business. Again, we addressed this earlier this evening by defining public safety and police, and so I think this has been addressed. I will drop this from the order of business. So ordered.
Item number four, Third District.
Please hold on the order of business. So ordered.
Moving on to new business, Mr. Presiding Officer, we have four prepared orders this
I move for the adoption of order number one. Yeah, order number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, order number one is adopted.
I move for the adoption of order number two, and would like to announce that the meeting on Tuesday, July 2, will be held at 2:00 p.m., due to that being a holiday week and not at the regular scheduled time. And I move for the adoption of order number two.
One moment, Madam Clerk. I'm going to ask that orders number three and four be held on the order of business. Oh, I'm sorry. Did we not vote for order number two? My apologies. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?